Reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town YouTube. I ask that those attending over Zoom keep their cameras off and microphones muted if they're not involved in this, in the discussion. And to use the racing feature if you would like to speak, for those speaking in person, please do so towards any microphones. Before we make your comments, please state your name and the street that you live on for record keeping purposes. I ask that those in the room remain quiet unless they are involved in the discussion. If this meeting gets interrupted, we will immediately end the Zoom and send them your emails out of here right away.
And I'm turning it over to our distinguished council president.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first item on the agenda is one that we requested to go back on the agenda, which is the revision of the stormwater ordinance. We identified a problem, which is that we allow no plan needed for up to 150 square feet and then a plan needed at 151 square feet. And our rules are quite tight, so there's a lot you have to do. Comply with that plan at 151 square feet. So it's a very, it's a cliff going from 150 square feet. Suddenly you've dropped into a major thing that you have to do. So the idea is to make it more of a gradient from 150 square feet so that it steeps up what you have to do. That was the thought, and that was the thought, I think, behind Ron's suggestion in his revision where he was breaking it into, I think, four steps and saying that, including the zero step, you know. But with growing size of rain garden with each great gradient up from 150 square feet. We were concerned with that because rain gardens are not suitable for all properties. Oil is wrong for them in some places. Sometimes you're at the bottom of a hill and doesn't work at the bottom of a hill. And so the question is then, well, how do we create that gradient? And that's where we left it. So that's a summary. And I expect your brilliant thoughts now. Are you ready? Anybody with suggestions?
I think the gradient is, is a good idea considering after some of the issues we've noticed for residents. I, I don't know if we're being too prescriptive with this. But in some ways that just simplifies it for folks. And if we want to waste other acceptable devices, I think we could talk about it. It's a question thing.
All right.
And Mr. Chair, may I just add quickly that the draft I put together that's before you was just meant to get the discussion started. So I, I used the rain garden sizing criteria from the Montgomery County Rainscapes program. But again, that was just to get the conversation started. I don't pretend to be a stormwater engineer. And you'll see in the note that I was thinking, you might think about other options too. In addition to rain gardens, there may be other gradated devices that, that you would accept. Maybe that's a question for our, our stormwater engineer. What else would be out there other than a, a rain garden where we could say 150 to 200, give this and that, so on. I hope that helps. Thank you.
I mean, we could add it to our stormwater engineer and say, create a gradient and see what he comes up with. But you know, maybe we should give him some pointers is really where I am. Great silence.
I don't have any.
Councilor Hallard, don't you have something to say?
I just think the simpler we can make this, the better.
Right.
That's where I stand. So someone like me could understand it when they read.
Right. So for someone with, add, make an addition of 150 to 500 square feet impervious surface. This lays out clearly criteria that they can need to satisfy the stormwater requirements, how they have to offset everything they're discussing. So I think that's great. And maybe we just leave it with the rain gardens as a sample. And then if people want to propose something else, we can indicate they can propose something else. I'm not, I don't want, I don't think we need to, we're able to spend $10,000 on engineers for a small project.
Really, for example, a rain garden, I, that says any other acceptable devices by question mark there. The only thought I'd have is that we make something like, I don't know, 150 to 300 square feet. Landscapers advice, but we recommend that you mitigate stormwater damage. We don't require that you mitigate stormwater damage at 300 square feet. We require it and, but we require that you get landscapers advice on what you can do, you know, something like that. As the only other suggestion that I could come up with.
I don't like the idea of saying, go talk to your landscaper. That's really, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll talk to my landscaper. He said everything's fine. You know, I, I, no, I think it's even more formal for that.
Well, but I mean, at the same time, it's like really, you know, the intent and like the design of some of these stormwater management measures are for pretty much full teardowns and like gigantic renovations. And, you know, to have just a small addition on your house, you know, where you're not tearing it down and building it to all four corners and all of the things like, you know, I mean, I, I don't know. You, you know, I mean, I do think that it maybe could be like a, you know, to just try to do something, you know? I don't know. I mean, to me, it's more, it's a bigger deal when you know, the impact on our neighborhood comes from when these houses, you know, have all this impervious surfaces that have been added with garages in the back and, and driveways and, and, you know, huge houses on these lots, and then they accumulate on top of each other. And then what we're left with is total street runoff and flooding issues. And, you know, so a modest renovation to me isn't quite as, you know, not necessarily what is big of a deal, I guess.
Except we had these problems before we built the, the total renovations. I know it personally because I moved in. I had a water, I had water, I had a river running through my backyard and into my basement.
Yeah.
You know, that was, and there were no renovations on the block then, you know? So these are all problems made worse by what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the houses back then were built with no stormwater mitigation plan at all. So it's hardly surprising. It's funny.
500 square feet, that'd be half of this room?
Be less.
Less than half of this room.
Do you think? Am I wrong? No, maybe that.
What's her?
Oh, God. 10 feet by 10 feet is the hundred. So it's 500 square feet is pretty big.
500 square feet feeds to me half of this room would be a reasonable estimate. I mean, you know, what we are saying is that we want to exempt impervious surfaces up to 500 square feet.
Up, up to some level, not necessarily 500.
Like 300.
Well, so the first question is, is 500 the right level?
No, I mean, my suggestion was that we have a, a recommendation up to say 300, let's say 300. And then we require it beyond that is, is the thought.
Well, it, well, one would be sort of, what is that upper limit? You know, sure, you're up 500, but you want to decide that. Because, you know, at, at some, at some point, it feels like it's a small size enough project that it can mitigate stormwater through other means that are more small scale and major.
Right.
So that's level one. Level two is then, do we need to say how they mitigate? And then, you know, in, in, in the code, we don't need to say, go talk to your landscaper, you know? We probably want to be very clear what we want them to do. So that's the second question. Do we want to be very clear if it's a small scale?
Okay, I mean, first of all, small scale, we can define it here, but I mean, if we agree on 300, fine, or 250, it doesn't matter. But the issue is how clear can I speak? The problem is that landscapes vary around the town substantially. And so it's very hard to have consistent, clear statements, but there's a rain garden which won't work in some places is what it boils down to. You might say plant trees and that's great, but if they've already got a yard covered with trees because they need to do that. So in other words, it's all very context dependent.
We would say for projects, 300, it would be all 500, wish me side, I don't know where it is. But unless we want commensurate sort of, you know, mitigation efforts that could include any of the following, rain garden, planting trees, planting media. As long as they are described to us in a hearing as I am attempting to mitigate the impact of this impervious surface and I'm doing these three things. So we want to hear that, right? We probably want to hear that they are trying to do something. That would be my, where my mind is going in this work session. I think that's probably better than just saying you're exempt. Given the general intent that we have. I think the goal of this is they don't end up spending a lot of money on overly sophisticated and complicated methods. But we keep the sort of sense of our interest in this, which is try to mitigate, there is all going to be impact. Try to mitigate them somehow. Do some plantings, plant a tree, do some rain, do something. But explain to us in a council hearing that it's committed, it matches this impervious surface.
They'll provide a landscaping plan that mitigates the.
Exactly. That, you know, is a reasonable mitigation of, of stormwater implicated in this.
That, that could include rain gardens or other devices.
Could include planting, exactly.
I mean, again, like now I'm kind of contradicting myself, but like, yeah, I mean, at the same time, I guess, like anyone who is adding this on to their house will have, you know, probably be talking about it as part of the plans of, you know, what they can do for their own lawn too. So.
Yeah.
So I guess it's not really, you know, that much of an added increase.
Exactly. I, I, I think exactly. I think what is the, what we consider as small would be worth defining. And I, I, I needed, I needed to visualize that. That's why I was wondering if it's half of this room or whatever, because we will need to understand that if someone is adding 500 square feet footage of impervious surface, what does that visually look like? Would be good to know. And whether, is that the demarcation for us?
I think that's too high.
I think so too. I think that is too high.
Is that 500 square feet, this room?
This room itself is.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we just had that screen porch, like they're making it 200 square foot screen porch. Yeah. You have a screen porch, right?
I do.
How, do you know how big it is?
I don't. Back at us.
I mean, you know, I think that that like 200 maybe.
Yeah, I think it's, I think 200 or 300 range sounds right too. But again, I would want us to ground it in something, but that sounds right.
How about we settle on 250 of them between 200 and 300?
Well, I think that the, the town attorney can research and see what.
Exactly. If you can ground it in perhaps other jurisdictions or some other data that gives us some basis.
I mean, I can tell you because the stormwater committee did look at this and other jurisdictions are all over the map in terms of what they decide is the cutoff for when the mitigation should, is mandatory. Everything from, you know, 100 square feet to by 300, 400 square feet, they're, they're all out there as examples. So we won't get a definite answer from scanning other jurisdictions. The, the stormwater committee already tried that and came up with a 150 in the end.
I mean, I would be comfortable 300 times right to me. And I would be comfortable then saying, present a commensurate plan, as you said, landscaping plan that has these options that mitigates the stormwater implication. That would be the added sentence, no table, no tiering, none of that.
Yeah.
So anything up to 300 feet, please give a, you're exempt from this other requirement and give us something that tells us you are doing something about the stormwater would be the spread.
All right. Steve, where are you? You're silent at the moment.
Yes, I'm very concerned about my earlier comments about the experience we've had. So we've had this in place. I'm aware of one resident who's brought a project forward through the council. And my recollection is there were many complaints voiced, but then after we explained that we weren't looking for a formal study, all of a sudden came the next meeting, we passed it. So are we talking about correcting something that's not really an issue that needs to be corrected?
Yeah, maybe we should just leave it.
Well, does it reply, do we need to change it in the form to make that smoother? I guess that was part of it.
I mean, it, it, I don't want us to be, oh, if it's only 200 square feet, don't worry about it. It won't, it won't matter. You know, I mean, that, that, that's not the way we should handle it. Surely.
Yeah, right now the trigger is 150 square feet.
Right.
Town of Chevy Chase is 700 square feet for their plan.
Yeah. And it, you'll, you'll see numbers varying on other different ones.
What about Chevy Chase Village?
They may not have it.
They don't, as I recall, they don't have a, a specific trigger or a specific water drainage ordinance. They just have a permit requirement that at the time of application, an applicant must demonstrate that there's no adverse impact on neighbors. I believe that's their requirement. Last I checked in a couple of years since I checked that. They're not a client of mine.
He can check. Yeah. The issue is whether you want to ask him to draft something.
Yeah, well, we're, we're trying to reach there. There is, there's some of the council are saying just these things alone at the moment, one, they had one resident complaining. And they did a hard time.
Ron, would you still give them stuff that anything that they could have come in? On the example that Steve brought up in the previous case, anything? Your experience dealing with that, that could improve?
Yeah, well, I think that's kind of like, I mentioned this kind of, the reason that we're talking together, you all are talking about this at all is because there is this issue of small scale projects having to do with a formal, formal process. And it's prohibitively expensive compared to the actual cost of the project, which is kind of the, into this again, for potentially carving out an exception. They don't have to go through that whole process.
Does our code require a formal stud? Or any formal documentation?
Yes, it requires a stormwater drainage plan.
A plan?
Yeah.
I could take out a napkin and draw a plan. I mean, we could add the word informal plan or.
But we then review that using Baylen.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, but. There is requirements for the plan. The plan has to be designed in accordance with the criteria in the code. And that was the resident's concern that in order to design it in compliance with the code, I have to have an engineer. Because the engineer's got to determine the retention and what devices are appropriate.
Well, and part of it too, if you have a code currently written is the code recommends certain stormwater management devices over others. And so they have to, as the code is now, they have to go with environmental site design first, which is why then they have to get special justification that they want to do a dry, what dry well is because of our codes being as well, that we have a tiered system.
Give me just a moment.
Yeah, if they go with a dry well, they have to explain why E S D, environmental site design is not possible.
How about this, which is that we come up with something that for the up to 300 square feet, which is come up with a plan that demonstrates no adverse effect on neighbors, which is borrowing Chevy Chase villages. And includes any of, and this is where we get our landscaper Kelly, what's her name's advice in terms of the kinds of things that you can do. Plant trees, you know, yes, the rain garden, conservation landscaping, flower beds with, you know, use natural plants, all that kind of thing. She's good at that. It would be a tiny contract for her. And see if that would fly. It's got to be something simple that the owners can do themselves that doesn't require an engineer.
I'm comfortable with that. I think in the sense that we can create some car about this small project without making it complicated.
EJ, can you ask?
Right, but I, I don't have any sense of basis for it. And, oh, it isn't, so, so I, I would support it, a car, car like you're describing for 150 to 300 square feet. For a smaller. And, and then we can see how it goes. Yeah.
Could you ask Kelly? If she'd do that.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. We're all happy with that, so we can go on. All right. If he's looking at the phone, we must be happy. All right. The next item is the updated Montgomery County State delegation letter, and that's been updated since the update.
This is the most.
This is the most recent version now.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, EJ, for including the most recent in the package, which I sent to him today. So the, the town of Chevy Chase has spearheaded this effort and has been somewhat of a challenge to make sure we have text that's acceptable to all 11 of our signatories. We think we have that now. Garrett Park and Chevy Chase Village had made some comments and they both reported back that this current draft is acceptable to them. You'll note that changes that are made just make the letter a little, little more general. At this point, some jurisdictions have noted that they've not yet digested the full attainable housing strategies presentation from the county and discussed it with their residents. So some are not yet in the position to indicate in the letter whether they have a position yet, which I think is a fair point. So you're removing language to indicate that any positions yet been taken. Everyone agreed before and currently on the, the actual substance of the letter, the proposed text that's to be submitted to the delegates for a hopeful introduction of a bill this next regular session in January. And I talked to the, the mayor today. We'll reach out to one or more of the delegates and try to set up a meeting to discuss this with them face to face.
All right, so the, the changes do not impact the central piece of this letter, which is the request to legislature to make sure that our town codes apply to all kinds of residential homes in our towns. At the moment, there is language in the text that says it applies to single family residential houses. At the time, that was all we had, and therefore it didn't matter that it said that. But it matters now. And so the idea is to take the single family out so that it covers all kinds of residents in the town. That's, that's what it's about. And as I said, the changes that have been requested by these other municipalities do not affect that language. It's still there. The changes are basically deleting some extra text that was meant to show that we were not against multiple family houses. And that's concern that they haven't discussed that with their own residents and therefore they don't know the position of their town. Are we still okay with this? That's what it boils down to.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Well, I, we hope that the legislature will, legislature will go, of course.
I, right. Okay. So we're all still okay with it and that's fine. All right then.
A quick question, Ron, do we believe this is a tall order? Do we believe, Ron, that this is a tall order for this amendment to actually happen? Or, or let me phrase it a different way. What's our sense of the challenges we might face for this amendment to actually?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say. I, I don't, I don't expect it should be difficult for the delegates to appreciate. Mayor Lane has had discussions with their district delegates. Shetty Solomon and Kaufman and I think there's, you know, understanding of why this is needed. It doesn't seem to be too controversial that, you know, as you know, the delegates did suggest that we add language that would, would reflect that our regulations, while at this point, we obviously intend to treat all housing fairly, that there actually be legislation to reflect, we can be less strict on multifamily. So we've, you know, included that text in the ask at the delegate's suggestion.
Got it. Thank you.
We talked to our, our, our representative?
Well, we're going to meet with them. That's Ron I talked about.
Okay.
And it's, and the chair of the delegation.
Yeah. Carmen Wallach and Warman.
Though we're also going to meet. You know, and we can meet with Senator Love and we, but we also should meet with the chair of our delegate, Montgomery delegation. From Rockville. Her name escapes me. She's been in Rockville City Council.
Okay.
All right. So we're all okay with it and we can therefore let Mayor Lane know we're all okay with.
I will. I'll do so right now. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the new resident letter, which has been updated and EJ can take us through that.
Yes, so this was brought to the last work session at the time it started out as more a letter to realtors, but then it was adjusted to be a letter to newcomers in general, they kind of hopefully thought we would ask for them to give to prospective buyers or people who are closing on their homes and so the line was made to be a bit more representative of Somerset as a whole and more friendly and less official. So here's the most recent draft. Have it take any feedbacks and for further edits.
I would do one thing. In paragraph, paragraph four, the last sentence where it says a permitting process separate from the county for all construction projects is outlined in our town code, I would bold that. Because I think that's, you know, this is a lot of information. People might, you know, just sort of like race through it. But that's really something that we've learned is really important, I think, that people don't realize. And this, this, this just, you know, gives them a little extra oomph.
Absolutely. And I think we should add some line about banning gas powered blowers. I've noticed a resurgence in use of gas powered blowers soon. We saw a report in the town here. No, like four, four different towns, different landscapers.
What is the Montgomery County ban?
I think, yeah, I think this coming year it's about on sale and the next year it's about on use. So.
I, I agree with Debbie that some may have maybe even sections. And amenities. You know, our own, or something that would be highlights.
I would format this a little, and I know this is just on our computers, but I would just take it out and format it a little more user friendly to read and so, and, and the bold, you know, that.
And it covers everything. And it's very nicely done.
I think it is, it is a welcome addition. I think it's useful.
Yeah.
So that, that's it. And yes, I, I'm happy to agree to Debbie's suggestion that we bold the permitting process.
You didn't put a line and say, please find, I can be.
Should we, why don't you do it at the newcomers' party?
We put this on, on the website too?
That's, it would go on the website as well. Yeah.
Yeah, like, you know, really bold, the townofsumerset.com website to get all sorts of great information.
There should be a video of you on the, and, well, I mean,
like, here are the rules and it was there like like a running scroll.
We could make you have you star in the video.
Maybe we should put it as a song.
On page 1,000, you'll find, right?
Refer to page 573, which refers to page 82.
Okay. So I think, no, I think that Ron wants it approved on, in a council. Didn't you? Didn't you, have you always suggest, first of all, you've reviewed this, right?
Yes, I have. Yeah.
Okay. So you, you, you've always said that you, you want it to be approved by the council, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So now you have three people.
Okay, then we've got to put it up for our October meeting. So we agree to put it up there for October meeting. Yep, everybody knows. All right. So the. Um, I mean, we're adding the new resident letter to the October agenda.
Gas powered leaf blowers are banned in Montgomery County after July one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so the thing is. We're you're, so you're putting this on the agenda to be passed at the. And but I think it will be better if it was introduced and then published, so the public can comment on it. Right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, that's right.
Well, 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 the council has the power to pass it. I think, given the fact that. There's a number of residents that have been following this kind of thing for years. That we should introduce it and then publicize it so people can make comments about it.
That would be consistent with your policy for adoption of ordinances and resolutions and policies.
Yeah.
This one's more than ceremonial.
Yeah, it's more than ceremonial, and I do think that there are going to be some citizens who think that this isn't strong enough.
Right, so we'll introduce it at the October meeting, and and there are some citizens that think that we need to continuously remind residents that. There are town rules on construction projects that they need to pay attention to. All right, um, the next item is the gift policy fund, and I think that's um. E J, just why did we bring it up? It's not sure, can't remember.
Uh, yes, so this was the last work session. We uh the council began discussing the possible establishment of a gift fund. Which kind of went into our entire gift policy. Uh, so this is the current gift policy. I want uh so the council could start a discussion on what they would like to see. I know at the last procession, uh council member Kimar mentioned that he had started work with. The Matt Cholter on this. I cannot find that document, unfortunately. If you can try to look, if you could find it, that'd be great. Um, so this is what uh this is what I would be able to find.
Right, yeah, I mean, the the gift fund idea is um. Not quite this. It is. That a gift fund is established for particular projects that town residents are interested in. The council would have to agree. We all said that the project was appropriate for the town. Um, and then a gift fund could be a location for those funds to be collected. That was the concept behind it.
You remember, remember, as we talked about, there's, this is two parts. There's the gift policy, which is very limited now. This was developed by Council Appeal. Ten, I don't know, many years ago. And remember, things like certain donations to the town pool are not part of that. So when they've been offered, they were just accepted by the manager. But so, for example, I think somebody wanted to donate some kind of. Play thing, game. And the problem if the town accepts it is that it becomes a fixture, so that then if it gets stolen or damaged. Then there's the expectation that that we will replace it. So so the issue with a gift policy is, do you want to add anything to that or not? Now, the fund is also the idea that um there would be a fund where people could donate. And they would possibly get a tax deduction, and that's where I had spoken with the community foundation. And and they can make a presentation on how that can be done, like they having to come up, for example. So so that's really what the discussion is about. It's a two part. It's a two part.
Right, and the the gift fund idea that that is people collectively saving. That was given to Kabir for the Budget and Revenue Committee to um tidy up and give a detailed proposal back to us, right?
Yes.
The the I T, the other part of this is um and it's it is kind of memorial gifts or gifts to the town. Which are not money, but are property. Um, and we've had several of those.
Well, we had that one bequest, which I think is still.
Yeah, there is there is there is a memorial request, too, that we've got. We've got no policy on the use of that memorial request, which, again, we should think about.
Well, there, yeah, there should be a policy like who does, for example, it was a former council member who passed away, and she left it in the will. That it's not as, and there there was no specific designation about it. So we should have a policy as to where where that money would go and who would decide what to do with it. So that's, and and do you have anything to offer, Mr. Town Attorney, on how that could be added to our code?
I'm typing an email to E J right now. I found a draft I worked on. At twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
I had added a sentence that the town council may decide in its discretion whether to undertake maintenance. And or replacement runs responsibility for any item. The town reserves the right in its discretion to dispose of any donated items for which the town has decided not to undertake maintenance and or replacement. To address that issue that you noted, Mr. Mayor, and as I recall, there it was a question about. You know, donation of a foosball table, I think it was, or a pool table.
Yeah, pool table.
And we thought, once it, once it's useful, life has been used up, we should be able to dispose of it. Not taking on an obligation to replace it in kind.
So so shouldn't we have some kind of document that if someone donates it, that they sign that? That they're donating it and.
Yes, yes, indeed. Yeah.
But the other thing was, don't we want to put in our code somewhere what the procedure would be if we get it? If we get an unsolicited bequest, undesigned request, how the money, who decides how to spend the money? Because, I mean, like, right now, I think it probably would just be up to the mayor to decide. But maybe we should have a procedure that it that it's put in a phone. I don't know. I think. I think there just should be some policy about that.
Yeah, yeah, def- definitely, and I see E J's added here some good language that says. In that instance, the donation is deemed unrestricted. And it can be used by the town for whatever purposes the town finds appropriate in its discretion. But if you want some.
But but I mean, that, but see, that that's kind of vague, because then who decides? The town doesn't decide.
The mayor and.
Right, mayor, manager, or do you want it to go before the council?
They, I think it should go before the council. It it's partly for ethics reasons. In other words.
Yeah.
You, the the mayor making decision like that on his own, not you, Jeffrey.
Absolutely, it could be abused, but that's why you you all should decide how how you want to put into.
Okay, yeah, we can add that.
For what's worth the this original policy? The form, this original policy, the great starting point, the green one that already exists. Maybe that's what you were referring to, Ron. And I I guess we could use that as a starting point. Because there is a form, if you want to donate, fill out this form. We could modify it to incorporate football and range use cases or make it more generic. Right now, it's specifically trees, benches, things like that.
Right.
Make it longer.
Well, I mean, you also might want to decide whether you want to have a plan giving um policy so that you remind people. They can leave, they can put Somerset in their will.
Yeah, right, I mean, there there is.
That's a separate thing.
There are different elements to this. That's.
Your everything, put everything.
Everything.
So there's there's there.
I mean, hopefully, somebody's gonna donate their house so that we can trade it into a a pickleball court.
Yeah, right. Actually, we made the block um because you need that.
I mean, there might be somebody that, I mean, you know, what's his name donated his house? The the former owner of the of the football team. Remember, he couldn't sell it. Remember, he couldn't sell it, so he donated.
Cancer.
He donated it, and somebody did that in in um Alexandria, too. So maybe somebody here that doesn't have any heirs is gonna donate their house to the town. We need to let them know they can do it. When they're doing their estate planning.
All right, so let's try to take the elements off this. All right, one is, one element is. When we get a memorial gift, how do we make decisions to spend it? And at the moment, the assumption is the mayor can simply decide. And the consensus seems to be that we should write a policy that reflects council involvement in that. But it could be the mayor proposes council disposes, and all of it, you know, that 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 kind of form. But we need a policy on that. Secondly. Well, it could be code or it could be just policy. So this is memorial gift, how we dispose of the funds.
Yeah, and Kabir, I couldn't hear your questions. Does it?
Um, so the uh Robin described, you know, what what are the procedures? For utilizing funds that we receive as part of a memorial gift or or even a.
Yeah, it can, this can be included in the policy. We can update the existing policy to include that procedure. All right.
Okay, a question was, does it also need to be something that's reflected in our code?
No, I don't think so. So what what you might put in the code is, in in the summer of twenty twenty-three. I see we were also discussing procedures for outgoing gifts. If a charitable organization requests a contribution from the town, and I had proposed language for that. That's something that sometimes you'll find in the code if you want to prescribe parameters. You know, requirements on when that could even be considered to have the force of law rather than a policy. For example, in Martin's additions, they have a code provision that that says. We're not going to entertain requests for donations unless you check these initial boxes. You're a five oh one C three, your request would supplement and not supplant your operating needs. This is for an extraordinary need, et et cetera.
Well. That seems to me to be a little bit redundant, because doesn't it say in the Maryland Constitution or somewhere that? That that any funds that we spend are supposed to be used to benefit our residents?
That's absolutely right. So, yeah, the.
And and but it's to make it clear, because, you know, years ago, the town of Somerset gave a contribution to. Some nonprofit in D C. And that was clearly, they they didn't use a town attorney in meetings in those days. But that's clearly a violation of of state law or constitution. So I do think, in order to protect these funds that we are the trustee of, that we should have similar language like. Martin's additions for the future.
All right, I mean, it it this gets more and more complicated. Um, so first of all.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, it is. It is com- it's very complex.
It is. We we've got agreement that we need a procedure to cover. Quite bequests of money that we receive.
We'll update the policy.
And update the policy to reflect that, one. Two, we're now talking about when we give money to other organizations. And that we are highly limited in doing that, because we are constrained, really, that our money should benefit Somerset residents. The question is, how do we go beyond that? And we haven't really had a discussion around that, so let me put that to one side for the moment. Next thing is, are we handling gifts of property? Do we have enough language to cover gifts property, or do we need to improve that? It's property issue.
Well, in property, you mean the home?
I I I, well, it could be as much as a home, but a foosball table, you know, from up up to, and a piano, which would be given.
But that to to in what what we need there specifically, what I understood from the earlier conversation was to update the intake form. And you, which is effectively the agreement we sign with the donor.
Yeah.
What that spells out some of the issues that you already laid out, that we are on the hook for maintenance and.
Yeah.
All of those pieces, so that we, that's the action item there, that it needs to be updated.
All right.
So that it spells out, we are on the hook for maintenance. It's a one time gift. We accept it only if the.
All right, so.
The piece is in good condition and can be used and it's not scrap.
And have we found the form where initial work has been done on that yet?
Yes, there's a problem. Ron sent it to me.
Okay, so Ron, you've now got an E J.
So I can share it.
Okay, and so maybe at the next work session, we finalize that one.
All right, that's item number two. There was a third item, which was a giving farm.
Yes, well, that's that's, I think that's fourth, whatever. Yeah. So then this is this is this is when residents want want to um build, I don't know, uh, something at the pool, whatever.
It might be, it could be any for any 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 purpose.
Right.
That can be accept uh funds. And could we then give people, so that's right. I'll be in a position to do that, and then what are the procedures?
Right, we 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 can do that, and that's what Jeffrey's talking about, that he's been in touch with the foundation. And that's what basically I've, your committee is trying to come up with. In principle, we can do it, so let's.
Yes.
What 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 does the committee recommend how we do it?
Well, the committee had first asked whether we can legally do it or not, and I think that's where it stated. That we, I think Ron then came back and said, yes, we can actually provide a tax write-up, if I'm not mistaken, Ron. But that's, I think, as far as that effort went.
All right.
Yeah, but we can take it further.
Right.
If it's sensible.
Yeah, come up with a recommendation to give to council so that we can act on it. All right. Okay, so have I left something hanging, or is that everything?
And that's to me, it sounds like.
Okay. That was easy. Um, let's move on to pool cover, which should be a lot easier, actually. Uh, E J, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, thank you. So this was a prompt to my attention by Rob Smith, who is the uh. Uh, Vice President of Construction of American Pools. He was the one who oversaw the folding patient project on their end. Uh, council members who are and help are very familiar with him. He reached out to me recently about um a new pool cover, and so. Uh, on the second page of the uh. Section of the packet, I included a justification. Um, and so basically. Uh, what he is saying is that, while they didn't change the size of the pool during their renovation, they did uh. Change the shape a little bit, uh, and says we made the shallow end turn more of a true turn. In the deep end walls, a softer turn with the coping tire line. Um, his fear is that the existing cover will be enough often up on these two areas, that it will shift the straight lines. And cause areas of the pool to become exposed. Uh, the new slide may cause an issue with the cut as well. Uh, and then if it doesn't end up fitting, they'll have to drill new holes, which will cause double drilling on the deck. After I got this email, I walked out with him, so he can point out exactly what all this meant to me. So basically, um. And why, uh, part of the reason of uh, it really is we discuss by the council is. Technically doesn't know if it uh technically the old one could still fit. And um, and so if that was the case, um. Then we shouldn't need to buy a new one, but at the same time, um, since this takes a couple of weeks to develop, the pool would be. Uh, let's expose uh quite a little bit after pool closing. And then even if it does fit, they might have to drill new holes, which would just maybe would have. All unused holes on the deck, and then if it didn't fit as well, that would be parts of it of the pool exposed with the cover. So American Pools is arguing for a new pool cover, which I think included their proposal and justification.
We talk about the holes on the deck. Are there holes drilled now to fit a new cover? Or there are no holes?
There are no holes yet.
So we have to get holes.
Yes.
For any cover that we do.
Yes.
So if this were my house, I would take out the cover. I would stretch it out to see, does it fit or it doesn't fit? And if it doesn't, I'd order a new cover. Why aren't we doing it?
That's what I asked American Pools. And their big argument uh is that. Due to, they won't be able to test out the pool cover until pool closing due to the.
That's Sunday. That's Sunday. Okay, we're talking not a week. And that pool is going to close, so why can't they take it out on Monday, stretch it out? Figure out it's yay or nay, and if it's, if it doesn't fit, then we have to buy a new cover. But maybe it will fit. They gotta drill holes in my house. How they slice it, no? This, what am I missing here about the holes? I I feel like I'm missing something that will have wrong holes.
Well, I think that to have this discussion, you need to have somebody from the. Well, I think that to have this discussion, you need to have somebody from the company to explain.
Well, I, I mean, can, can we vote on? Pushing this, this goes on our October agenda, the, the pool, pool safety cover. And we need to hear from the pool and, and the message to them is Debbie's message to American Pools, which is that. Try the old cover first to make sure that we need a new cover.
Yeah, Monday, Monday they need to pull it out. And they need to see if it fits. If it doesn't fit, then we have something to vote on.
So to clarify, you're saying let's put it on the agenda.
Right.
When we will get the big information, we can decide.
Right.
But, but also, also, you know. Um, for this price, probably we should be getting other, um, you know. Bids, bids, because I, you know, you can't just always believe what the, the one contractor says.
But I, I guess what I worry about in this is. If you have to go get new bids, it's going to take some time. And then will we be in time to get a pool cover? How hard is it to get a pool cover? Is this?
But that, but they need to.
I think there is an exigency, there's an exigency exception in our policy on the fifteen thousand minimum, I believe.
If it's an emergency.
Yeah.
There's a couple, there's a couple of exemptions.
But still, I know, but why are they telling us this now instead of? Yeah, that's the issue.
But, um, that's a, Debbie, coming back to your earlier point, by when does the cover need to be worn?
Technically, it's not, um.
Like from a weather perspective, not from a.
Yeah, so it, uh.
We probably have some time.
Uh, American Pools' argument. Is that, is that, uh, they'll have to treat the pool while it's open. So, uh, even if nobody's using it, if the pool's uncovered, they'll have to treat it with certain chemicals.
Well, just, just that we don't, it doesn't need to happen Monday, but it needs to happen before the next council meeting.
Well, but the pool closes on Sunday.
So they have, from then until the next council meeting, test the old cover.
Except what I'd love to know, why, why I'm saying, do it immediately. Okay, Monday's not appropriate, then this Tuesday. Is I, I invite for them to say to you, this definitely does not work, EJ. And if it doesn't work, then you can go get another bid or two. And we have, and ma- make this happen fast. Because I guess they want to cover it. Leaves are going to come down, all sorts of garbage, whatever.
Yeah, or, or make a case for the exemption.
Right, exactly. And make a case for the exemption.
It also, also, there could be, if this becomes urgent, I'm sure you can get other bids. And it can be, we can have a special meeting to vote on it.
That's true.
So there's, so. So I just think you have to do your due diligence here. The staff has got all this information.
Right.
But you, but you can't just rely on this one for an expense like that. You can't just rely on the recommendation of. You know, the contractor.
That's true.
It has a conflict of interest.
Yeah, Rob has been, I, I think fair with us, and I think he did a great job. And I do have confidence in Rob. But.
Except these are public funds that were.
No, 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 we follow the process, we follow.
But I, I, I think Rob is okay. All right.
I'm sure, but, but you still have to do your, this is why we're.
You know?
Yes. Okay.
So, all right, so we'll consider it for the October seventh meeting. We need the earliest indication whether it is necessary, if it is necessary. Is there any chance of getting bids in beyond that one before October seventh?
They can try. I think they need to try.
Yeah, you can't say.
You have to identify who does this and.
I mean, it's good that he brought it.
Whole person in and you gotta go with Rob.
Yeah.
All right. So are we all clear what's happening then? It is that. Once the pool closes, they should try to fit the current cover to it. If it doesn't fit, then. We will try to get additional bids before the October seventh meeting, and we will vote on the October seventh meeting, which bid we're accepting.
Okay.
Well done.
Sounds good to me.
Or, or have a special meeting if this, and if we need a special meeting.
Yeah.
All right. So EJ, it's you on the updated procurement policy.
Yes, so this was, uh, uh, put together by Ron after, uh, it's good. This was actually together a couple, uh, about a month or two ago, and just submitted on the agenda now in kind of response to, um. Different things that would come up. Uh, I can comment on it. Ron, would you want to go ahead and kind of go over the main changes of this procurement policy?
Sure, yeah, I can do that. So I, I think the. The main thrust of it was following my recommendation that there be. A time limit on contracts. A best practice, based on my experience, is to limit contracts to five years. A lot of contract vendors like to have open-end contracts that renew annually, but if you have a five-year. Limit or some other limit, then you're guaranteeing that you're going to go out to bid again periodically. You, you'll see that, that's the new number six. On page two, that for me was the, the biggest change. And then there's some, some clarifying. Language and paragraph seven there says, all of our procurement is subject to annual appropriation. And termination for convenience by the town. That's a, a standard provision for municipal contracts as well. Obviously, we can't fund a contract if it's not budgeted for. And. Then on page three. Additional. Term is added for our evaluation criteria. Again, another standard practice, standard language. We're not obligated. To accept the lowest bid. The, the standard phraseology is the lowest responsive and responsible vendor. So it's not always a vendor that's the lowest. The lowest bid doesn't have to be accepted because there are other considerations that we include. And then we've added a paragraph on, on what can happen if we don't receive a bid that directly meets our requirements. Or meets them only in part, allows us to engage in contract negotiations. And then there's some, some clarifying language in the exceptions. To. I guess just improve the, the way it's been phrased in the past. And, and instead of saying paybacking, we're saying cooperative bidding. Non-substantive there with, with respect to those edits on the bottom of page three, top of page four. So that is it in a nutshell. Last time we amended this was twenty twenty-two. And this is the type of policy that you could adopt on the spot if you want. Or if you wanted to hold it over for public comment, you could do that too. I consider this one more administrative than, than policymaking. But up to the council.
I, I, we wrote, I think this makes good common sense. It's just strictly administrative. Image and objections. If, if people want to object, or let us know, and I told them to reconsider. But I can move along, adopt it.
If you. Yeah, uh, just what does responsible mean in the, in the context of it should be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible vendor?
Responsible typically means you're, you're satisfied by the presentation of their references. Uh, that, and their, their proposal in general about their work experience, that they do have the.
There are no, there are no black marks against them is what it falls down to.
Exactly, yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, I got no other questions. Are we all right? Okay, we, we, we are quite comfortable with this as an administrative.
Can, can that, but can't that be put on the, um. Consent agenda.
It certainly could, Mr. Mayor.
Her, her, her circuit's requests.
Yes, it could. Yes, definitely. Absolutely. That's, yeah, that's, that's, that's a better way of doing it.
But I, but I do think, make sure that it's in the packet because there are citizens that read. Every, read the documents connected to every agenda item. Which I'm very happy about.
All right, so we'll move it to the consent agenda then. The next item is committee reorganization. That's a big item. And Debbie, you've been leading the charge on this one, so.
Well, actually, we've been doing this together, EJ and I. EJ, do you want me to start? Do you want to start? You want to start? Okay. Okay, what brought us to this is that we have fourteen committees, okay? We have some non-commissions that, um. Current, they're called current non-committee bodies, you know, that, that don't, do not require a council liaison. The fourteen committees, however. Do, except for maybe audit doesn't get one. By, um, and, um, audit and, uh. I guess, um. Um, what's it called?
The Board of Elections.
Board of Elections.
That's not my committee.
Okay.
Those are both in the charter.
Okay, so, so fourteen is a lot of committees. And we are, we have a problem getting committee members. You know, and, um, so it isn't like we have people knocking on the door going, hey, I want to do this. And so we, we talked about. Putting some committees together. And so what we came up with were seven proposed committees. And you can see, the first one that we bundle is the finance, revenue and budget. Um, thinking that those were three committees that could really work, be, be under one umbrella. Um, the next one was the environment, that's number three, communication stays as it is. Environment, which is the merger of environment and parks and natural resources. We thought that was a good one to put together. And by the way, this is all for discussion. Okay, so I'm just throwing it out at you guys and then you tell us what you think. Nothing here is set in stone. The, the next one would be, um, community events. It's a merger of equity and inclusion and newcomers. And I want to add, we don't really have an equity inclusion committee right now because we don't have a chair.
Well, we have a number of committees we don't have.
Yeah, we have a number of committees, we don't have chairs, that's another problem. Um, keeping pool by itself, even though I have to say. I really thought that overhaul, we should have a recreation committee. Pool and tennis. Pickleball.
Battle for another time.
Battle for another time.
We don't have that committee. We still have the batting cage committee, don't we?
We can still dream.
Anyway, so yes, I would love to see pool and tennis, uh, bundled together, but maybe that's for another time. Um, and then public safety, merge public safety and traffic. Traffic committee is also on, on the defunct end of life here, but, but still, it's very important. And public safety has really picked that up already in terms of talking about that, you know, stuff. So this is our, this is our suggestion. And now I would like you guys, EJ, you want to add anything to it?
Will you also, the history committee can go and.
Yeah, you want to talk about the non-committee?
The non-commissions, okay, non-commissions, um, okay, non-commissions, okay. Board of Supervisors, we know that one has to stay on its own. Youth Council, that is really, you know, the brainchild of EJ. And so he is running it. I think that's very appropriate. I don't think it needs one of us. I love that it's actually sitting here in the town hall. In our seat of government, because they, we, we're trying, you know, we're nurturing them to do this sort of work. Um, swim team, we've never really.
But we're working, we're, we're reorganizing that.
Okay, swim team? What are you organizing?
We're, we're working on a new governance structure for that.
Um.
Cause that doesn't work. It doesn't, it doesn't work, function as a committee.
Okay. Swim team, um, if, I don't, I don't understand that, but it was a swim team committee.
There's like, so that's just more because as the mayor said, well, we organize any town governance, don't be a committee anymore.
Okay.
So it sounds like these will not be committees.
Right.
Committees.
Right.
But.
For different reasons.
Right, right. And they just.
What's the concern over the history and archives committee?
We don't have it.
Well, it, it lacks a chair at the moment of the.
Yes, absolutely.
So we, we kind of looked at that as. These are as, as, on an, on, as needed basis. So a history project comes our way, we pull somebody in to work on it, and then we're done. We don't need a formal committee.
Well, also the history, so the history committee years ago, what they would do is they would put on an event. So, so.
They did recently too. The, 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 um. It's also about archives and, and a, a lot, a lot of history depends upon the archives to keep. And so they're, they're intimately tied together. And what the history and archives committee has been concerned about is the town archives and maintaining them. Uh, for future historic, history reasons. Um, so they are bound together. And so.
It's, but it's, it's more of a, it's more of a staff function.
I thought Paige was the.
She, she's, she's, I'm, I'm going to talk to Paige again, see if she wants to be chair again. She seemed to be back to life again.
She can be, but she could be on the community, on the community events committee.
But I, I.
And we won't be able to find people to be on that committee.
What I'm trying to say is archiving is important to history and the history and archive.
And I, I agree with that, but I'd love to see it to be, I'd like to see it to be a function of the town hall, so it always has continuity. And then when there are special projects, then our town manager, our assistant town manager reaches out. And gets somebody, you know, of like-mindedness who wants to work on this, like Paige. Maybe Paige just want to be the chair, but maybe Paige wants to come back to run a project.
The, the, yeah, the problem with having these committees is then you have the Open Meetings Act. They have to be announced, you have to have members, you have to take votes and all that. And it's better if they're just. Volunteers that help the town staff on certain things. And the archives, the archive function is handled by the staff. So there, it's not as if any citizen needs to have input into some policies.
There are, uh, there. The archives were not handled well by prior town staff. I'm sure EJ is making a good job. But it's beyond that, there are town records that are not in the town hall.
Right.
I know, but that. Harman's house at the moment, as far as I can understand. And I'm going to have a look at them and see if we can get.
Well, but, well, those should, those. But a committee, but that isn't really committee work. That isn't committee work. That is, that's, that's staff work. The only reason we added archives was because we weren't in compliance with Maryland law. And then we hired Donna, that, the other Donna. And now we're in compliance. So it's not as if there's anything, i- if, if volunteers want to help the town staff. With the history project or archives, they can do it, but we don't have to be bound by this committee structure. Where they have to go to meetings, be announced, take Open Meetings Act, it's just not.
Have a chair.
It, it's just kind of dysfunctional. And it's going to be, it's, it's hard enough to find people for seven committees, much less fourteen.
Yeah, uh, the commu- communications committee is a great example. We don't have, we need at least one more person, but we can't get it. You know, um, it's a great committee. As I said, I think it's one of the best committees I've ever worked on. It is just, Wesley runs it and, and, uh, she's great and it's a great committee. But we're down a person and we can't, and we've looked. We, we've knocked on doors and, um.
Right, that's what, that's, that's why, yeah, it's better to have seven functioning committees and. And then if there's a, you know, Robin, if there's a need, let's see if there's a need sometime to have. Citizen input on the archives policy, then a special committee can be created like we did for the sidewalk. But for now, there, there, it doesn't really, the history committee doesn't really have a, a mission that they need to, um, achieve.
I would love to see us try this, you know, and try it and see if it works. Doesn't work, then we expand. But I would just love to try it.
Well, I'll bring it back to the committee and get their read on it.
Okay, what are the rest of you think? I. Yeah, I think it's.
I mean, the thing is, you move it forward, the idea, and then people can comment. And then you can, if enough. So if, if so many people object to the elimination of the history and archives committee. So then you put it back in, but I don't think that's going to happen.
I mean. The history archives aside, even if that goes back, the committee is a little.
Right, yeah.
I mean.
So let's not lose sight.
I mean, one of the reasons why Paige resigned from the chair is because she didn't, you know, we have to, all these committees are supposed to.
Paige resigned as the chair because her husband died.
But she also.
But let's not, let's not belabor this. We can get it, we can bring it back.
Right.
Yeah.
But overall, I think everyone lives alone. Just quickly on finance, revenue and budget, I was given some homework on that after the last time we discussed, and I discussed with. The revenue chair, and I discussed with Peter Simon, who's now the chair of the budget committee, and it's. Been a problem, and we started to draw the charter.
Great, thank you.
And that, I mean, I started to drop it and drop all that, but we can, we can, I can circulate that. Before the next council meeting.
I mean. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that any citizen that wants to get involved with some area of the town government. We find a way for them to do that.
I have a small. Just to keeping in mind people, personality. But we call it environment and. But we call it environment and parks.
I'm not married to any of these.
Okay.
You guys like environment?
Small suggestion.
Parks, or what, what, what do we call it?
Environment, sorry.
Parks and natural resources.
Environment acquired the other committee and just made the.
Well, there's another committee that has, has lost the chair, the Parks Committee.
We're going to have a Parks and Racket.
He has made his pay for a year. But that's a small minded, not a big deal.
I don't really care what we call it.
But I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And then a last suggestion is, does this accompany sort of other reform, like how long can someone be a chair of a committee?
Well, that's another conversation we need to have.
Okay.
Because some of our committees have chairs forever.
Well, they are an extension of that person.
Right, and it's not healthy, you know.
Three committees in particular are an extension of that person, which is not a bad thing for our town, frankly, that they're committed people, but I wonder that it brought a reform.
But also, it does hold other people back.
It may.
And, and um, it, it's just, you know, being here thirty-eight years, okay, and I've been part of some of these unhealthy.
That's persons committee.
Right, it, it's just.
Well, well, that committee, there used to be term limits on the.
Can I, can I break it back into order here and say, what's the next step here? Is someone going to write an article for Town Journal presenting this reorganization?
Well, what is the next?
Well, do you want to introduce it as the first idea?
Yeah, we need to introduce it.
So we introduce it.
Introduce it as what exactly?
It's a committee reorganization, committee revitalization, committee.
Well, Mr. Town Attorney, aren't the committees all in the code?
Yes.
The, the standing committees are all in the code, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so, so it would be, it would, you would ask, you would ask the town attorney to draft an amendment to the code to reflect whatever you all want.
But we, we want to.
Before.
So you might want to do that, you might want to ask them to draft something and then discuss it again at, at the October work session, decide whether you introduce it.
Robin, you're unhappy with.
To everyone.
Yeah, I, I, I think my, my first inclination is to share it with the town and get their reaction because so many people are on committees in the town and will have feelings about it for that reason. So before we change everything and come up.
So then what you could do is EJ and, and Debbie could write, EJ could author an article that's cosigned by Debbie with such proposal that incorporates all the good ideas people had. And then at the uh work session in October, you could decide to charge the town attorney for drafting something to be introduced.
Right.
All right.
So that seems, that would seem to incorporate everybody's excellent input.
All right, okay, so we know what the next step there is, and we can move on to updates from the town managers, so EJ.
One last question, the Ethics Commission and the League.
Yes, I was about to explain about that.
Would you expand on that?
Yeah, that's what I'll start with, so this was something that uh kind of emerged after me, uh, there are a couple of us attended the uh Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference, is a lot of towns, uh cities, actually, most of them have an ethics commission. Or even Somerset does, because we were especially exempted when the state law was first created, uh but after.
Why, why would we?
It was our size, it was our size.
I see.
Yeah.
And budget.
And budget.
This was, this was, when was that, like twenty years ago? Because in, this is when, isn't this when?
Nineteen ninety years.
Isn't this when Chevy Chase Village had, when people were running for the council to disclose their net worth and everything?
The, yeah, the ethics law goes back many decades, but yeah, you're right, Mr. Mayor, maybe, maybe twelve years ago, approximately, that law was amended to require financial disclosure, but.
Right, right.
Okay, yes, okay.
But they have a bigger budget because they have police departments.
There is a state law or county law, state law that prescribes exactly what these commissions.
Yes, and so.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
When they're required.
When they're required, okay.
And so.
I see, that's helpful, Rob.
After the next work session, that I wanted to bring this, just the general idea before the council, but um to create the, draft a more in-depth proposal of basically opting in to the law.
Um, that would be helpful before we adopt it.
Mm-hmm. But that's, uh, but the idea that kind of emerged from speaking with other towns and uh representatives in the state level.
Sounds great. And then a campaign finance too. Hmm, you, you know, the town, Chesapeake Beach now, um, did you know this, Mr. Town Attorney? In Chesapeake Beach, they put in a new uh law that uh limits the amount of campaign contributions and also limits it to towns' citizens.
I did not know that, Mr. Mayor.
Chesapeake Beach.
I must buy a house there. Um, I have a question, uh, uh, that kind of relates to, um, if we, if we want to discuss at a future meeting, term limits, does, does that have to be, is that a code thing also?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Probably charter. Well, I think we have to include that in the charter because I think that's.
But is that for committees, remember, council member Circo brought this up about two years ago? And, but does that also, would it have to be in the charter, it was for a committee?
No, not for committees, no, that could be.
So you're.
Your course of committee is not for us.
Well, I, I actually would love for us to talk in general, but I, you know, but I realize that's another meeting.
That's another.
But I did, I did wonder in terms of if we did it for committees, you know, what we had to do legally, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, that could be the code.
Okay.
So let me see, yeah, thirteen is.
Are you saying you want to bring up the idea of term limits for committee chairs for discussion?
She's contemplating it.
Well, I do, I, I think, I think it's.
Well, we can put it on the agenda for next month, next week.
Yeah, I think we should do that. We need.
If you don't get anyone else to volunteer, maybe.
Yeah, we need to have a discussion, we don't have a direct idea. I just think it needs, we need to discuss it as a team and decide what.
Well, you know, you could have a term limit for a committee, for committee membership or chair, and then you could have a waiver.
Oh, so I, I apologize, I'm corrected, so the, the charter currently provides at section thirteen, three, there are no limits on the number of terms that may be served on a town committee.
Oh.
That would be.
I didn't realize that committees were even in the charter.
I forgot as well.
Did they have committees in nineteen oh six? I guess so.
Does that refer to chairs separately, or because similarly, there could be a limit on a chair of a committee without being a limit on a committee member?
Okay, so yeah, chairs are addressed in thirteen, four. There are no limits on the number of times that an individual may be nominated and appointed as chairperson of a town committee.
Okay, okay.
But you can change any of that.
We, 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 yeah, I mean, we could also say that they should.
Oh, I apologize, that's, that's chapter thirteen of the code, not of the charter.
Okay, okay.
Those are, those are code amendments, not charter.
Then we can change that, okay, all right, let's, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, then it can be discussed, all right. Um, so EJ, back to you, updates from the town manager.
So this is because I did not do, I accidentally or mistakenly did not include a management report in the September council meeting, so I thought I'd kind of give a verbal one here, and then uh councilor made questions uh just kind of on general updates. So first, uh, this kind of goes to the uh public safety priority of sidewalks that's been brought up the last couple of months. Um, and so earlier this month, we replaced three major hazards of sidewalk, uh one on Big Suri, one on Cumberland, and one on Dorset. And then we identified some other hazards, we're going to look at fixing, um. So that's the first item, and then the second item is street repairs, so another public safety priority. Um, so this kind of, two parts is, one, we are working on the um development of that master plan, so that has been slowed down recently because of the pedestrian safety working group is wanting to discuss it before it moves further along, which day will be given me Tuesday. Uh, but it's been discussed with all the safety committee and other parties. Uh, but in the meantime, we have noticed that there are some immediate issues we would like to take care of, and so last week, I walked the town with a couple of people, um, I, I, we identified, um, pointing out potholes, uh, some major cracking, uh sidewalks and rumble strips that need restoration. Uh, so I walked with them so they could put together a scope of work, and they're going through that process right now. So once they create that scope of work, I can then uh issue RFP, have that work hopefully done soon. Third thing is the pool bridge, just as a capital project outlined in the budget. Currently having it inspected so that I can create a scope of work about exactly what we need to have done to the bridge. Uh, and so once that inspection is done, I can create an RFP uh for that work. Next, another capital project, the tennis court renovation is complete. Uh, I think it looks quite nice, uh, and then we also, uh, so it was completely resurfaced, repainted, cleaned up. We also ordered some new game, um, I think it looks really good.
Are people playing tennis on it now?
They are, yesterday I noticed all three courts being used, that's the first time I've noticed that.
Playing pickleball.
No pickleball, but it's the first time I saw all three courts being used in probably months and months, okay, so, great.
Rushing to it, all right.
That's fine.
So, operations then, EJ.
Yes, and so, so on the rollout of the op out compost collection program, we have given compost crew an entire list of all the houses that are being added to the program. We, of course, have been did the households that opted out.
How many opted out?
Fifteen households currently have opted out. And then, so, yeah, but, no, no, so.
Big volume, they do.
Yes, they're, they're, they're about to start delivering the buckets, I've been in contact with them. They had some sort, I don't know, they didn't give me all the details, they had some sort of manufacturing problem. They manufacture their own buckets, they ran into submission, so they're behind schedule, which has pushed us behind schedule. So they are telling me that they should be able to start delivering this, in this month. But uh, that's, that's uh why it hasn't happened quite yet.
Right.
Second thing is uh traffic calming and working.
I guess the order of month, the off, the, the order.
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like. It's still a small.
Yeah, and so uh traffic calming, uh, there's been, and I've been in town, talking about, um, of course, uh worries about speeding and all sorts of other problems, so after speaking with the public safety community, uh, we're acquiring uh two devices, those devices that can actually track how fast people are going, and it collates all the data. So we're gonna, um, once we get those, the plan is to put them at different spots around town and actually collect data um to see uh what kind of traffic calming measures should be put in place and where we need to place them. Uh, on the fun side of things, we recently had the newcomers party in Non-Gendering New Year's Eve Social. Both those events, I thought, went fairly well, uh, thanks to the newcomers committee, the volunteers of the Non-Gendering New Year's Eve Social, and of course Linda, uh, made all those events uh really successful, so uh pretty happy about that. Next, Polymorphic.
They're doing amazing, amazing.
Cookies.
One of the amazing, amazing.
Which are not available. Do you have no samples?
That's for sure, there'd be some boxes here when I came in, I was really disappointed.
I was, I, that's what I was hoping, empty box.
No, full boxes of cookies.
Um, so a couple of months ago, we signed a contract with Polymorphic for new software, the first in which we haven't, we're kind of testing right now, but it is available to the public, which is a smart search function on the website. Uh, so if you go onto the website, there is uh a new search function pretty prominently displayed. Me and Justin right now are making sure everything.
How's it working?
We, it's working really great, because I'm uh, I'm very happy with uh the answers it provides.
Wow.
And uh, yes, the, one thing we're still working through, the only kink really, is how it shows up on Google Docs.
Oh shit, I was just gonna.
It, it still works, it still works, but.
Ninety-five percent of them.
Yeah, it, it still works, but it kind of clogs at the screen, it's more of a, uh, not, it's more of a design.
UI thing.
Yeah, UI thing, so on desktop, it looks really good, but we're still working with them to make it better of UI. Um, and then uh still uh working on it, but getting pretty close is a um moving our permitting application online, uh, we're um still messing around with a few different features to get how we want, but that's coming along really promising, I'm actually hoping that potentially the next work, work session, uh, to give the council a tech demo of it, basically, uh, same with tennis registration, that is done as soon as we connect it to our accounts.
Um, excuse me, does that mean that to, that, that, that all registration comes through here and not through, you know, carry?
Yes.
Money, everything?
Yes. Um, and we're working on a couple other uh systems right now, but the tennis registration and the permitting are uh the two biggest ones. Uh, next, I've recently been getting quite a few comments on the town entrances, um, so.
Maybe recent.
Are they positive or negative?
They're not positive.
They are not, positive.
Okay, well, we already discussed that there shouldn't be.
Yes.
We want people to comment.
Yes, so I'm putting together, I, I met with Kelly and I'm putting together an action plan to uh tackle those and turn those comments into positives.
You should put up the search and show people.
Okay.
I, I did a simple question, which is what are our stone water font?
Can I?
I think pretty good.
I can do that.
What are the towns' stone water font?
All right.
It's really bad.
So where are we on dot gov?
Yes, I'll do that, Kevin, and I can do a quick tech demo, it's docu. We're so close, we've gotten approved, we started the process, uh, but our IT, uh, the person we use for IT has ran into a technical issue getting it set up, so we had to reach out to the docu of IT support, and so now we're at the mercy of federal government IT support waiting on them to respond to us. So it's coming very soon, uh, we're just waiting on this technical issue. Um, and then committee updates, the communications committee, committee hosted their second town talks with resident Andrew Weiss. It was standing room only, uh, it was a quite a great turnout, um.
That's great, it was, it was fabulous, it was fabulous.
Uh, as a, and then, at the environment committee just hosted a meeting, and part of that meeting was a presentation with uh backyard bounty, um, and I knew a few residents to that, and then I already mentioned it, but the newcomers hosted the newcomers party. And then uh they kind of finished up, they, I will, so this is how our website is currently looking. Uh, you can see in the corner of the feature, and so that is, you can ask, uh.
You can type in what are the stone water font?
Hit my.
I love that AI is thinking.
Yeah, and then, and then it provides an answer, so I'm trying to, trying to get rid of all.
That's great, wow.
Um.
That helps.
And then also.
You have to check if it's hallucinating, if it's not coming up as requirement of another town.
Luckily, it does um show word feeding its information, which has been really helpful.
Not using chat GPT, is it?
It's based off the technology.
It's based on multiple elements.
That's so crazy.
Yeah, um, but I'm really happy.
You like, put in there, which is the best? Who is the most popular council member?
I did, I don't know.
It's only you.
It could be Shannon.
Jamie Rask.
I don't think it'll give an answer.
Yeah, uh, the sources provide no information about popularity, but it does tell you when you might be able to look to find the most popular council.
Well, could you, could you put in when are the next, uh, when is the next council meeting?
Yes, and this is the one actual issue we are still running, and it's making sure it's reading the calendar correctly.
Probably not reading that.
Yes, but I, I will show you what it says.
It's not the time, it was last.
Oh, no, actually.
It gets it right, there we go, all right.
October twenty. Pretty fast, right?
Yeah.
This text that you're reading, it doesn't exist in this form anywhere on the site. This, it, the AI is generating this.
Yes, it's incredible.
Just do one more, what do I need to do?
Ron, we might not need you anymore.
Yeah, I'm, I'm logging on right now to.
What is on page, what is?
Now, we need more.
Be of the code.
We need. I think we need him on a daily basis.
So, all right.
Very nice.
All right, thank you.
No, no.
So the last item was town fees, which I asked if we would only.
No, he's giving the doc.
I did that.
He did that already.
I did it, yeah.
I asked if we would only get it after the discussion over the water aerobics, and we were accused that we don't have a policy on when we charge fees for something versus. charge fees for something versus included in taxes. And it's true, we don't, in fact, have a policy. So one thing to think about is what goes into a policy which, where we decide when we have fees as opposed to just allowing taxes. Some things are obvious, you know, like if people rent the town hall, obviously they pay a fee for that. But we're, you know, going beyond that, where do we go? And so that's, that's what to think about, uh, to stop it there, because it's seven o'clock already, but.
Maybe get a traffic for nights.
Well, we go until seven thirty.
I have.
Oh, we don't.
But I have one quick thing. Can I just bring up one quick thing? Since you're, you're done with town fees, and yes, we should talk about that. Um, anyway, I just wanted to remind everybody that Wednesday night, Andrew Friedson is hosting a listening session on the attainable housing. And what they'll do is they will present the whole, um, their, their, their whole plan. And then if they do it like they did the others, there'll be questions where people can raise their hand. They are on with a microphone, and people say what they're thinking or they ask questions. They're not really answering questions, except they did a few at, at the Wheaton session. Um, so far, uh, oh, five hundred people have registered to be there. Wow. I, I've been in contact today with Matt Higgins, Andrew's legislative assistant, trying to find out where they let people in at the door anyway. In the past sessions, he said that they did check people in. He goes, this is gonna be too many people. And it will probably depend on the um, fire marshal, what the fire marshal says. So I, 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 I think we should, those of us that can be there really should go. I think it's really an important meeting. And I want to say that I think we as a council need to have this discussion, and we need to decide, are we taking the stand? What kind of leadership are we going to provide in all the other communities around? They've all got groups working on it and, and talking to people, and I, I've been out there pounding, yesterday I was pounding the pavement. Those, those pamphlets in your door, if you were on my side of the town, I did. The other side, Rohit Kahana did. Yep. Um, and uh, but, you know, we, we need, we need to be discussing this. And how do we, what, what, do we want to mobilize our, our town people? You know, I, I know that some people, here's my sense, there'll be some people that agree with it, like the idea of it, but I think the majority of our residents will not. And so, but we need to find out. And we need to decide how we're gonna do this and take some, and take a stand and be, and be leaders in our town for this, so. Because people ask me, what does the council say? You know, so um, I say, well, we haven't taken a position yet. Now, I know Jeffrey pointed out to me, it's not on the legislative agenda yet because it hasn't been introduced. But people, in, in, we, walking around yesterday, people didn't know about it. You know, um, and uh, so.
Well, one of the things, you know, one of the things that I had talked about this summer is that, you know, we started with the presentation by the planning, but, but I had raised the idea that we would have uh, a meeting here to achieve the same kind of call that, that Friedson, just for our citizens.
We should have our own.
So, so, so we can do that.
Okay.
So, so we can, I mean, that's what we had talked about.
I'm happy to take. What's the timing on all this? Well.
Yeah. Okay, what's gonna happen is, once they start having these meetings, they're gonna get, you're gonna get um, chicken. And they, I mean, I don't, I mean, I, maybe they'll introduce something in November, but I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, they don't even know, because I've talked to many of the council, I've talked to many of the council members and.
Yeah. Andrew got taken to the cleaners at the Drummond. At the Drummond Black Party last night.
Because, because everybody knows that Andrew's, Andrew is all about um, his developer supporters.
Right.
And he doesn't, and, and the way, the, the, so given that there's no restrictions on um, requirements for affordable housing in the, the planning board recommendations, that's what all Andrew's people want. So he's, this is all just for show. Because he's not gonna be our ally on this.
Well, we have to make him be our ally.
But he, he's only one vote.
I know he's.
And he's not even gonna be the chair. He's not even gonna be the president of the council.
He needs to hear from us. He was not.
I, I know, but we also need to speak out to our other uh, representative, our four large representatives.
So we have some work to do, but I think we need to start first. I think you're right.
Totally.
We need to have a listening session here in Somerset.
Yeah.
For our, for our residents, let them tell us what they think and feel with them, ask us questions, we'll answer.
And then we could also invite Andrew to be here that night, so he can, these, all these good questions you have, we can ask him.
Right.
They're the ones making the decisions.
We should be able to have a town session with our representative.
Yeah, I think, we should invite him, we should invite him.
All right.
Debbie, in terms of your other request, if you want us, the council, to meet. Of all this, I'm definitely ready to do that whenever it makes sense.
Yeah, well, is, do we do this at the next um, work session?
We can do a special session, we can go to the next.
We might want our own session for it, because it's quite, I mean, the issue is quite complex, actually.
And I think, I think we need to, to, so do we talk about it first as a group and then have our listening session? Is that what you think? Okay, then we need to make a special meeting for it.
And I want to remind you that as this council did submit a charter in the previous situation.
Yeah, that was back for two years ago.
Yeah. So we have, we have come up with a collective position, and we can try to come up with a collective position.
Now, just so you know, Arlington County.
Did you get this? Did you get this?
I suppose that's where we will go too. I don't know, is Ron still on? Ron, what are you hearing from your, from your other towns?
So you're, you're fine with that for generally?
On, on whether what vote is a.
You know, I just wonder, um, is every, you know, Jeffrey thinks that this won't go anywhere. What do you, what do your other towns think?
No, I didn't say they won't go anywhere.
Well, you kind of said.
No, I didn't say that.
Well.
Well, yeah, I'd, I'd rather say it in closed session.
Yeah, we don't need it.
All right, no time. May, can we have that meeting in closed session?
If you get, if it's to get legal advice, if you want my legal opinion on.
This is, this is, we don't need to be in closed session. It's not, it's not a legal matter.
Okay, then we need to create a, a, a meeting, okay?
I'm happy for us to convene separately.
Okay.
But I think it's better that we do convene separately. It's too big an item for.
Right. I just wanted to put it on the table to say.
You want to drive a, an email?
I, no, no, I think, no, no, I think that first we should have a, first we should have a session for our citizens to hear from our council member and the planning board and, and ask questions, just like they're doing. There's, there's, we don't have enough, and first of all, there's no legislation. So we can't necessarily take a position in anything yet, till there's legislation. So I think that, just like you, you like the idea, is that we invite Andrew or invite the planning board to have a public meeting here.
The planning board is kind of useless right now. They have made their recommendation, they gave it, they're done. They gave it.
Okay, so then who do you, who do you, so then who do you want to invite to come to this session?
All three planning committee members of the. So Andrew, Will, Gustafur, uh.
Oh, Natalie.
All three of them.
Gonzalez.
Except, except they don't, except those aren't our representatives.
They're not gonna come to our meeting.
They will not come to our meeting.
The only one who would come would be all the ones that, that we vote for.
His counsel at law.
Well, we can.
But that's what I said.
But I think this is, I just, I just wonder if we just don't want to hear from our, our residents first, before we have them.
I see no harm in us getting together to talk about this. No harm in that, expressing what we understand, what we don't understand, where it might go. There's no harm in doing that. I, I think it's a good thing for us to do that.
I like that idea too.
And then we can do that very quickly and in parallel try and plan competing with inviting Andrew and potentially Will for town session.
Let's see what happens Wednesday night.
Yeah.
He might not want to come out after Wednesday, but I did it.
He seems to have a fixed.
Yeah, well, he does. He has to.
All right.
All right.
Your turn?
Jer.
Robert?
Uh, we're all done, no other items?
EJ, I'll work with you on.
Best emotion to return?
Uh, second.
Second.
Okay, return.
Thank you.